Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of Tuesday, October 10th, 5:30. Got a few things on the agenda, as always, quite a few things on the agenda, I should say. So, the meeting's been called to order. First order of business, we normally go through any sort of announcements that the town has, or any of the various boards. Before we do that, what I'd like to do is welcome our newest Town Secretary, Linda Sassi, who's been in the position now for a few weeks and is doing great, and you'll be seeing a lot more of her on television. And should you come into the secretary's office, along with Wilma, Linda will be there to help you out. So, you're welcome. And welcome aboard, Linda.
Welcome.
We also, we've been asked to just let folks know that Rite Aid will be holding a flu clinic at the Board of Health Office downstairs on Tuesday, October 24th, from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., and then the same night, October 24th, from 5:00 to 6:30. It's open to anyone over the age of 18. Insurance programs are accepted and billed. You should bring your health insurance card with you, if you have one. And you can preregister by calling the Hatfield Council on Aging at (247) 9003 by October 20th. Walk-ins are welcome, but I think if you can call ahead of time so they have a heads-up, that would be appreciated. Well, I guess while I have the floor, before Marlene gives us some updates, I just want to remind people that this Saturday is also homecoming for Smith Academy. So, you'll see the big traffic jam for 15 or 20 minutes going down Main Street. But, you know, come out and support the teams. There's always concessions over Smith Academy, and, you know, just support what the schools do. So, I just wanted to let everybody know that this Saturday is that date. Marlene, you had a few announcements you wanted to make?
Yes. Massachusetts Municipal Association held a fall legislative meeting update locally a couple of weeks ago, it was in North Hampton. Select Board member Cindy Doty and I attended that session. It was interesting. They did talk about Chapter 90 moving across the governor's desk, hopefully, I think, in January. January. And, well, I think John Robertson, who was speaking, was the speaker for Mass Municipal Association, the retail marijuana moratorium, has been, I guess, quite a large topic of conversation. However, it wasn't for this particular meeting. And that's ongoing, and actually, we can touch base about it later in the meeting when we talk about having a special town meeting, if we do. And, I'm just trying to think of some, I didn't bring my notes with me, I apologize. It was certainly well-attended.
Yes.
Quite a few communities were present. And Representative Peter Colcott was there, as well as Representative Kulik.
Yep.
Kulik was there. And...
And the hyphenated name Gold, the one that took Ellen Storey's place from Amherst.
Yes.
Yeah, Ellen was there, too.
Yes.
His name's escaping me, I know who you mean.
Gold, something.
Yep. Yeah, those are always informative. I can't get to many of them, but, and they're usually a good turnout, you know, I know they spread them around the state, so, it's good. All right. Thank you.
I don't know if you have anything you wanted to add?
No, no, it was interesting. It was just basically updates on what they've been dealing with in the legislative process. But the main one, as you said, it was the legalization of recreational marijuana, which should be interesting.
Yeah. The public records law, actually, was, I think, a big topic, consumed quite a bit of the meeting. The, yes, the public records statute that was changed under the municipal modernization bill a year ago. And that is creating problems for a lot of communities, particularly the smaller communities. They don't have the staff...
Right, right.
...to handle the volume of requests. The next item, paramedic service, as you know, that the fire chief has been looking to implement paramedic services. It was possible that that might go into service over the weekend. The inspection was held and passed. It just, what the fire chief doesn't have right now is the medications, supply of medications that need to be in the ambulance available.
Was there an ETA in that? Did the chief know yet, as far as when those might be? I'm sure it all had to depend when you got the license. I mean, I'm guessing there, you know, one follows the other.
Right. He's just waiting to receive it from Cooley Dickinson.
Oh, okay.
And he said as soon as he receives it, he will let us know.
So hopefully not too much longer.
Inspection was Friday.
Inspection was Friday?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that went very well. At the department head, and again, this is just information from last week's department head meeting.
Yeah.
Actually, some positive news was the automated external defibrillators are now available for the athletic teams. They're implementing them gradually for the teams.
I think that, if I'm not mistaken, that was through a grant, actually...
Yes.
That the chief gone and the fire department had actually gotten, working for the school department. So that's where those AEDs are coming from. So, that was great. Thank you.
Yes, that was good news to hear that. That is all I have for announcements this time.
Okay. Ed, do you have anything under the public announcement?
No.
Cindy?
None at this time, no.
Okay. That's great. Thank you, Marlene.
You're welcome.
So, we do have one set of minutes from our August 23rd meeting, if there's a motion to approve those.
Make a motion to approve those minutes?
All right. I'll second that. Is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, Cindy. Ed wasn't...
He abstained.
Wasn't present at that meeting, so...
Right.
Okay. All right. Posted business. So, our first order of business is an application for a retail alcoholic and beverage application. So, it's an open hearing, so I will call the meeting to order as of 5:44 at Memorial Town Hall on the date of October 10th. Attorney Paul Malik is here to speak on behalf of the proposal. What we're, what's happening is, the application is to transfer the issuance of stock at Sisters Convenience Store and Deli Corporation.
Correct.
I don't, if, I don't know if anyone has, yes, that would be fine if you don't mind. Thank you. If anyone has any questions, or you just wanted to expound upon that a little bit.
Good evening. My name is Paul Malik. I'm a lawyer in Springfield at Doherty Wallace, Pilz, Murphy. I'm here on behalf of Sisters Convenience and Deli Corp., which is currently owned by three shareholders, two males and one female. Of the two males, one of the males wants to buy out the other male. So, in context, Shanti Bai Patel, who currently owns 33%, wants to sell his 33% to, excuse me, wants to buy from Yogesh Patel, his 33%, so that Shanti Bai will end up with 66%. And that Pinky, that's a very unique name, Patel will remain a 34% shareholder. It's my understanding that there's never been a problem, there's no violations at this store, that it runs as a smooth operation. And albeit that it's an existing shareholder buying out another existing shareholder, under Massachusetts general law, Chapter 138, the Board of Selectmen, as the licensing authority, has the power to accept or reject a transfer of any beneficial interest. Hence, the reason why we're here tonight with the application.
Great. Thank you for the explanation.
No, I mean, it's an order thing. I don't see a problem with it.
Do you have any questions, Cindy?
No. I've seen the announcements, I know it was publicized like it was supposed to be, that kind of thing in the paper.
Okay. And I would ask if there's anybody here from the public that has any comments they'd like to make? Hearing none. The chair will entertain a motion to grant the amendment application for a change of beneficial interest or transfer issuance of stock for Sisters Convenience Store and Deli Corporation at 22 West Street, Hatfield, Mass., 0103, oh, excuse me, 01038. And I think we got a very good explanation from Attorney Malik, so thank you for that. So, is there a motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Ed? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Hearing's now closed.
The town will pay that directly?
We'll reverse it, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, attorney.
Thank you.
Okay. Topic number two is an update from the building inspector. Kyle Scott is making his way forward.
Yes, I gave you a handout with some of the projects we're working on right now in the building department. Currently, eight single-family homes under construction, various phases. Quite a few commercial things happening. The large solar field on Plain Road transferred to Eversource, so we'll be getting an updated building permit on that. Williams Farm, DiGester. Both fertilizer companies are looking at expanding. The center school, of course, we all know about. Steeble, Eltron is looking at 120,000 plus or minus square foot addition, which would be warehouse, possibly some of the light manufacturing, and then rental office spaces and office spaces in the first phase. Might also be apartments going in the rear in Phase 2 to help us with our apartment need that we have here in town. So that would be a plus. And various projects I've kind of outlined through the handout. We're still working, I'm still working with Phil from DPW on the sewer extension grant that, even if we don't make funding this year, I'm trying to set something up with the help of Steeble and Eltron to get a walk-through by the state rep and head of the Senate to keep the ball moving forward for a sewer extension on West Street.
Yeah, that was a, I don't mean to interrupt you, Kyle, I just wanted to thank you and Phil and Michael, our engineer...
Yes.
...for putting that together. We attended a meeting a few weeks ago with Representative Colcott and a representative of Senator Rosenberg. And it was very informative, and we had some of our Route 5 business owners...
Right.
...at that meeting as well, who were able to speak to Representative Colcott in Senator Rosenberg's office and explain what they're looking for, what they want to do. And everyone seemed pretty pumped up.
Very positive.
Seemed pretty pumped up about it. And I don't, I don't just mean the Hatfield officials.
Right.
I mean, the state officials did as well. So, thank you for that and your involvement with it. And I'm hoping it's gonna continue to move forward.
That's what we're trying to do. Erica Geese from Steeble-Eltron is a key player in it, and she's now trying to set up a walk-through the plant to keep the momentum going, which would, that would be also beneficial to Brockway Smith and...
Yeah, we talked about that, how that could dovetail for them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, there's, actually, while it seems like a small town, there's actually quite a lot happening for a small town in a, you know, as far as activity with the building department.
Yeah, for sure. There's an awful lot going on.
Yes.
And we already finished up the college, the five college annex.
Five college annex.
Which, you know, I was, I think we all actually had the good fortune of being there, but you weren't able to make it, but the Board of Directors of the five college annex and the people involved with the building down on Route 5 opened their congratulatory remarks by thanking not only the town of Hatfield in general, but you, Kyle, in particular.
I appreciate that.
So, I think I did reach out to you after that.
Yes, you did, and I appreciate that.
But I thought the townspeople should know that we get a lot of positive feedback...
Thank you.
...from the work and the efforts that you're doing.
I put a lot of effort into trying to get, increase Hatfield's tax base, get new businesses to town, and promote the town as part of my, as part of my role as building inspector. So, I think, I think it's headed on the right track, and if we could get that, certainly that sewer extension, that would be a...
That would be huge.
A huge thing for Hatfield.
Yep.
So...
Yeah, you know, and we do appreciate everything you do. You know, at that same meeting, I thought, going along with what you just said, I thought it was important to hear the chairman of the five college annex building committee also thank the town for being such a nice community to do, to want to do business with.
Right.
And I think that's a feather in all of our caps when the word is out that Hatfield is welcoming to new business or business growth. I think that says a lot for all of us, and that's what we need to do.
We've got a good team, you know, and Steve Gahn, the chief, is excellent. Even with Helena Chemical and the different questions, we work well together and communicate well, so...
So I were successful, because it's all about teamwork.
Yes. So on that note, I run over hours, and I didn't know if it would be possible to get my hours increased. I did talk to Finance Committee about it, and they thought it was possible. So, that's the second...
Yeah, and that's fine. So, what, so currently, I just, you know, I have it in front of me, but I just sort of want to say it out loud.
Sure.
So, currently, your salary in the contract that's negotiated with the selectmen, because it's an individual contract that you have...
Right.
...is for 28 hours per week.
Right.
You've been exceeding that...
I've been exceeding that for quite some time.
On a regular basis.
Yes.
And due to that fact, and that we have everything, just some of what you just outlined, there's a lot more to it.
It's a small portion.
But that's a small portion of it. You're looking to increase the hours by five...
Yes.
...per week. Okay. So, from 28 hours to 33, really, is...
Right, that's correct.
...is the basis of our conversation, so...
No, I mean...
If anyone wants to jump in.
On one hand, if you're putting in the extra time, you should be compensated. So, I'm thinking that if we decide to extend your hours to the five that you're putting in...
Yes.
Then where is it in the budget at this time? And where do we get it? And also whether or not we'd have to renegotiate your contract with you on the extension of the hours, or whether, under the present contract, we can extend the hours without negotiation. So, these are some of the questions that are hitting him.
I ran it by Darrell Williams, and I asked him if it was doable this fiscal year, and he said he would back it. You know, I just had an informal talk with him, and he was okay with it, because basically, he knows, and other members, even on finance, know, anytime they call me, I pick up that phone. It can be nighttime, weekend, and boom, I'm on it. And I think you'll find, anybody you talk to, that's the same, that's the same case. Whether it's a text message for an inspection or anything, I don't think there's anybody in this town that waits too long for anything, so, they get, they get their problems addressed.
I think we still have to address where the money comes from, number one.
Right. Two things. The contract would have to be reopened.
And I mean, the other issue is whether the board wants to move forward with this. And then the third issue would be, do we have to, if the board agrees with this, whether or not we have to renegotiate, do the contract over again? You know, I mean...
Or an interview, you know, memorandum of understan, or something. If the contract changes, we've got to do something.
Right. There would be an amendment.
We've got to do something.
Reopen, and there would be an amendment...
All right.
...if the board wishes to do that. But the other piece is the funding.
Right.
And that's something we would, we'd have to look at. I don't believe you have the money in your budget.
No.
Right.
I mean, I have money left over in my budget, but no.
Right.
I anticipate using that for training for the other inspectors.
Well, I mean, in the wages, the wage, your wage line.
No, no, I'm not padded heavy on the wages.
I don't think you have the money for those additional, right, right.
Have, and this is just a, for factual information, I guess, or a question about... So, have you been tracking your hours, even if they're in excess?
Yes.
And that's not to not, I don't doubt you.
Yeah, to the T.
Yeah.
Actually, Marlene, there is money, because the revolving fund, which I have never touched in the time I've been here, is $6,500 for building, for the building inspector, and I have never touched that, because I always felt it was dishonest for myself to claim hours that weren't allowed by my hourly. So I never, even though the inspections were allowed, I never put in for them.
Right, that's for additional inspections.
Because it just didn't seem right for me to sign my own slip.
Oh, can you, can you sort of run through me presently with the inspectors that you have working for you? They're provided with a stipend. Do they receive any additional compensation on top of that stipend, or how does that work?
Currently, Buster Samanski's full-time wiring. He gets a stipend, the largest amount. He's head wiring inspector. Tim Petrick this fiscal year was appointed because of Dave Lizick stepping down and retiring as the alternate. So, he's second-in-command, so to speak, in the wiring department. Tim stipends very little. Buster's is larger. Tim would get compensated from the revolving fund so much per inspection, besides, it's under $1,000 or just about at present. So he'd get $40 residential, 50 commercial. The same of which is true with plumbing. Steve Baranowski took the place of Walter Garrett. Steve gets a larger amount. Mark Gwendoloski is the alternate, or second, second plumbing and gas inspector. He's the same way, about $1,000, 40 residential, 50 commercial. And that's how they're compensated.
Okay, now, when you say revolving fund, that comes from the fees?
They're level funded from the general fund.
Okay.
$6,500 for each fund. Plumbing and gas, or gas, plumbing, and wiring. And there is a fund, $6,500 for building, that has never been touched.
And under, and under inspection services, if I recall, the budget this past year, your department actually took in more money than you actually paid out, right?
By far.
And, and your figure was, if I...
$115,000.
$115,000.
$800, I believe.
And you guys paid out...
Nowhere near that.
Nowhere near that, so. And that's due to all the additional work and the permits and the fees.
Approximately, we paid out $6,500 and took in $115,800. This year, we've already made more than my salary, I would say, already at this point.
Okay.
And this is, we're only a few months...
We're only four months into it.
Yeah.
Who's the, how about the, you know, these are just questions we've got to have answers to, Kyle, so...
Sure.
The assistant building inspector?
That would be Richard Kalaszewski.
Richard, right.
If I'm away or on vacation, and then I also have an alternate to him in case he got sick or was incapacitated, Charles Miller from Williamsburg. For instance, I'm building my own house right now. That would be the only time I would utilize one of them, or if I went away. I don't, I can't do my own inspection on my own house, or approve my own building permit.
Right.
So, I just want to make sure there's no conflict, or somebody says I'm using, you know, power over someone, so...
Right, it makes sense. Would it, is it possible to have either of those gentlemen pick up some of the hours, or is it really just in your absence that they...
It's just in my absence, yeah. And they would be compensated also, except it comes out of the revolving fund.
Understood, yeah.
So, I mean, there is that money, because it's never been touched, so...
So actually, within your budget, money is available if, if the board decides to move ahead with this.
There's $6,500 there, yes.
Would it be possible, or would it make sense to maybe on a, on a weekly basis or bi-weekly basis, provide the additional hours above your normal schedule? In other words, rather than, than just, and I don't know if this makes sense or not, but I'm just trying to think of different scenarios. So, rather than just change it from a 28-hour to a 33-hour position contractually, is it, do we keep it at 28 hours, and then if you go three, or four, or five, or, you know, whatever it is, on any given week, you put a...
With a cap of five.
Yeah, and then we, and then do the compensation that way. I mean, I have no idea if things slow down in the winter, and I'm not trying to nickel and dime anybody. I'm just, you know, until we get to where we want to actually renegotiate...
Yeah.
...the contract. And I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know what my colleagues think. I don't know if it makes any difference.
Well, that would give us tracking. I mean, that would, that would show that the additional hours are there. That's one way, I suppose.
I mean, I was keeping it at five as conservatively, truthfully, but I have no problem doing that. You know, if one week I work three over, or don't work any over, I have no problem with that.
And I, I'm also a realist. I realize that when all is said and done, you'd like to think it all kind of evens out, so...
Yeah.
You know, three this week, none next week, and then 20 the week after. I mean, that's, you know...
Now, these additional five hours, are they more towards inspections, or are they more towards dealing with contract office hours?
Half and half. Some of it's even zoning. I've had a couple headaches lately that have been some real problems, so, I'm working on...
So, sort of on the table, we're looking at not to do it, then we're looking at do it on a weekly or bi-weekly basis for compensation, or we're looking at possibly moving ahead with the whole thing, right? Those are...
I mean, I, I think that's pretty much the three.
I think, I think I get in good service. So I don't, I don't think, I don't think there's too many people that don't see me around, actually, almost, almost every day, even the weekend.
I see you at 7:00 in the morning, I see you in the evening when I come in. And what I'm looking at, it's not a raise, it's just an increase in hours.
That's correct.
So it's not a raise.
And if at any point I don't work them, and I want to cut back, I certainly will be honest with you and tell you that.
You know, I, I would agree with you there. I, I don't think any of the three of us, or anybody else in town, would argue what you just stated.
I'm just thinking with...
But we've got to do, you know, we've got to do our due diligence and ask the questions.
With the larger commercial stuff coming down...
Yeah.
This is a good way to have, to be upfront with it, because you're going to spend numerous, there's a lot more inspections per permit...
Right.
...than when you're phasing out these big projects. And so it's just being honest, truthfully.
And we want big projects.
Yes, and we do. We do, yes.
Right? So...
I mean, your department already took in, in four months, and then you have the revolving fund, and...
And last year and the year before.
And you should be compensated for the time you put in.
Yeah.
If you're putting any hours, then you should be paid for those hours.
People shouldn't be working for free.
Right.
And I'm still going to be, I think it's going to be a heavy cash generator...
We do that.
...for quite a while.
Okay.
No. My concern was like, it's not a raise, it is an increase in hours, which the percentage should reflect, you know, whatever the hours are.
Okay.
Well, then, I think we're at the point of whether we want to move ahead with just increase the hours, or we want to compensate the inspector on a bi-weekly basis of those extra hours, right? So...
Right.
But he's already figured out that an additional five hours would satisfy his requirements to do his job.
And I don't anticipate ever coming back on that. I mean, I, that should be, should be it for a while, so, unless we have even more tremendous growth than what I think. But right now, that's figuring everything we've got.
First, I, I think we do have to commend you. You have been very proactive in trying to get a lot of stuff done in this town to help businesses and stuff, so...
I would agree. Okay, so what's your pleasure?
I guess it comes to a motion.
Cindy, Ed, you're making a motion.
Actually, I'll make a motion to increase the hours as...
Presented.
...to the five hours a week.
Okay, is there a second?
There's a second.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
Cindy, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks very much for your help.
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you. Hang on, I lost my agenda. No, I didn't. Okay, um, so Phil's on vacation, so he won't be here tonight, but we've got a couple of, um, commitments to vote. The water and sewer commitments. Th- this is the expected collection for the fiscal year 2018, water bills and sewer bills, and this is, I think, just a matter of, um, I mean, bookkeeping of a sense, right, Marlene? I mean, this is just-
As the water commissioners-
Yeah, as the water commissioners, we're getting these brought forward, so.
The commitment should be voted before actually the bill goes out.
Yeah, so I, I'll just read this out, well, so the board of segment commits, uh, to you for collection the attached fiscal year eight, twenty eighteen water bills, uh, in the amount of twenty eight, two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. And sewer bills for two-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-three dollars and twenty cents. And there is a twenty eighteen, um, collection attached for a flat rate amount of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So in essence, what we're, uh, saying here is the expected collection is, uh, five-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and forty-three cents. And so I will need a motion to, uh, to approve our committed collection amount. If anybody wants to do that.
I'm just looking at the seniority on the board, I usually does it, so.
Whatever, as long as one of you does it.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Second's out.
Except as approved, Cindy seconded it, uh, seconded it, yeah, geez. Uh, any further conversation?
No.
Ed, you good? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so I'll sign that. The three of us will need to sign that after the meeting. Uh, we have a sewer abatement request, um, for fifty-one Elm Street, in the amount of ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents. What I'm not sure, oh, sorry, there it is, the big X, uh, due to a pool and liner repair. Um, so the, um, resident had to either lose all their water, or drain all their water. Then they're done that, and so, uh, after refilling it, um, the sewer amount for the number of gallons used to refill the pool, the sewer amount is ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents, and that's what they're looking for an abatement for. So the chair will entertain a motion, if so inclined, to abate ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Yeah, because basically all they're doing is, it's water use, they're just removing the sewer part of it, so that they get abated for it, okay, yeah.
Correct, yes, yep.
Right, they're paying for the water, but not the sewer, because it's not going out, and they can prove that when it's in the pool.
It's somewhat, we probably get a half dozen or so of these per year, you know, just, so.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All the, uh, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye, we'll have to sign that one, too. Okay. All right, Marlene, town administrators report.
Uh, as you know, um, there was a vacancy with the capital planning committee, um, the at-large position.
Mm-hmm. All right, Ty Lorenzo, um-
Ty Lorenzo had relocated.
Resigned, or relocated.
And, um, two applicants submitted letters of interest. The board's consideration.
All right, and this is for, um, one, uh, the term expires, it, I think they're three-year terms, but there's one year left on this? Or is it a year to year? Basically, one year left.
It's a one-year appointment.
Oh, it's a one-year appointment, oh, okay. Because I know Ty's been on it for a while, okay, so, uh, it's a one-year appointment. Expires next, you know, next, uh, June, probably, or July first.
Right, when, at the time, the board does, approves the annual appointments.
When we do the whole, yep. All right, so the two, uh, the two interested parties are David Keer and Christopher Smith, um, for that one-year term on capital planning, so. Is there a suggestion or motion from the board?
David, just, just to add, David Keer, who is the athletic director at the Smith Academy, will be retiring-
Yes.
um, next year, and had notified me several months ago, expressing interest in getting involved in town government and, and representing a board or committee.
Right.
So, you know, he, he is, actually, I also asked him if he'd be interested in the housing committee.
Hopefully, you said yes to that.
He did not.
All right, and I know we've got, uh, we as a town have a lot of, um, upcoming conversations about the, the various fields in town across the street, and up at Smith Academy. That, that will have to come forward as, as capital projects, so. Some of that background there as well. All right, well, I will make a motion, um, to appoint David Keer to replace Ty Lorenzo, uh, on the, as the selectman's appointment to the capital planning committee. Is there a second?
I'm, I'm, um, probably, I, I just want to know, is there, is there, there's no format for choosing one over the other, because you're only choosing one.
There's one vacancy, one vacancy. There are two at-large positions, one is filled, and this one is vacant.
Yeah, and so-
Like, what it, what it comes down to is whether you have, the, the two applicants here, one has been in town government for some time, and you got one that wants to get into town government, so it's-
Yeah, I'm just looking at criteria for, you know, one or the other, and, um, but there's no, no set rules or anything-
No.
For review and for, okay.
Actually, I think you got two good applicants, so it's, comes down to, uh-
Okay. So with, with your motion, I'm looking at, I'm trying to find a fair way to do this, and this sounds sad, the only I can think of is fair is whoever applied first, because I don't see anything else, and so, based on that, you know, because there is no protocol, um, I'm going to second the motion.
Okay.
I'm just feeling that, okay, this person showed interest first by the date on here, and by the date on the second one, because without any protocol, I just, I have no other way to be fair, as silly as that sounds, but, um, so, yeah, I'd like to second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
No.
I, I don't know how else to look at it.
That's fine.
You know?
It, you know, it happens with the appointments to all the committees, that we ultimately appoint people to if there's more than one.
Yeah, and I don't want to choose over the others, so I'm just picking a date, I figure that's not, I'm not choosing the, the person to second that.
Understandable.
But, um, so I do second that.
Okay, so there's been a motion made, seconded?
I'll make it unanimous.
No further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Marlene's putting on her police chief cap to give us an update.
Police chief Dukowski could not be here.
Dukowski wasn't able to make it tonight, but he, he, uh, was kind enough to give Marlene a few notes to just, uh, to share with the board and, and the town.
Yes. I went over and, um, we, we went over these, these issues earlier, and he told me he's going to pass them on to you for that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm happy to see all of these, as the liaison, I'm happy to see all these changes, so.
So as he mentions in his letter, um, they, uh, personnel in the department, um, or in the administration, they've received training regarding the use of, of Narcan.
Yeah.
Um, they are working on issuance of a drug license with the Hatfield Ambulance Department, and in order to, to carry and, and purchase the drug. As you know, the board of selectmen appointed most recent, uh, third full-time employee to the police department, Mark Rudock. And he's working out very well. And it's nice that, you know, he's out here at night sometimes, you know, when you're leaving, and he's available. Um, they're also developing their own, updating their, their own website. Actually, the website was under construction for some time, and, and-
Oh, I remember Cindy. Cindy mentioned it, I think.
Yeah, and it should be up and running in about two weeks, so just, um-
Their own police department.
That will be helpful.
Yeah, it's separate, I've got some information from, they're going to use on, on that, they've asked, you know, for anyone who had anything, so. Yeah, it should be up and running in the next two weeks.
That'll be good. Chief is also looking at updating the department's policy and procedures manual, and, um, they have also, um, updated their use of force policy. And actually, the, the chief had stopped into the office last week, and wanted to make me aware that they're looking at, um, implementing the use of a taser.
That's great.
Taser gun. So he, he said, he, you know, spent some time researching that, and in the end, felt that it would be in the best interest of the department.
Great. I know that, um, both police chief Dukowski and fire chief gone have been, um, continuing the communications and the workings with the school department as well, so, you know, it's always, uh, important. I don't want to say it's a concern, but, you know, you always want the school departments and, and public safety working as one, and, and figuring out, processes and policies and et cetera, so. Uh, the chiefs have, a- as were the previous chiefs, by the way, um, but, but these chiefs as well have, uh, carried on the great tradition of working with the public schools, so, uh, behalf of the school department, we appreciate that.
Once that taser's introduced, it does, you do have to include that in your policy and procedures, so it's, it's good to join them at both at the same time. And they haven't been trained in that yet, but it's, it is upcoming.
It will be, yes.
They haven't been trained yet.
Okay, thank you, Marlene. Uh, Franklin Regional Transit Authority report.
I recently attended the Franklin Regional Transit Authority's quarterly meeting on September twenty-first, and, um, apparently, and, and I don't have anything in writing from, from the FRTA as of yet, and I had researched previous meeting minutes, um, from the Franklin Regional Transit Authority. But apparently, the shelter locations, um, are, are regulated by department transportation, and I would have thought that this is something that DOT would have been involved in some time ago. So my understanding is that FRTA was going to locate a shelter on Route five and ten between Danko and the medical facility, Cooley Dickinson, uh, medical facility there.
That's what we've been told.
And that was supposed to be done in the spring. And, uh, I had followed up with Representative of the FRTA when I attended the meeting, and he had indicated that there had been a lack of communication. So I was sort of, uh, amiss of what he was referring to, because the last time we communicated, everything was all set. So anyway, I, I followed up with, uh, some email communications that I had with him previously, and forwarded those to him. They have put me in touch with a new, uh, general manager at FRTA who is following this. It was that gentleman that told me that DOT is regulating these shelters, so there's some changes that need to be made. So they will be following up with me, and as that develops, I will share that with the board. So I, I, I was disappointed-
Yeah.
Um, because, you know, I, I worked closely with Mr. Raymond at Danko, and the facility manager for-
Right, at the medical center, yeah.
Right, so we're all, everybody was on board, um, with that.
All right, well, thank you for sticking with it, I, sometimes the simplest things are not so simple. Or things that appear to be the simplest things are not so simple, but, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, got a, uh, MIA grant application here?
Right, MIA is our, uh, insurance property, general, uh, general liability insurance agent. And they have, um, released the fiscal year eighteen grant application. And this, you know, we look at, at possible losses that we've had previously. The school department has had some issues in the past with their, their coolers, their walk-in coolers.
Freezers and coolers, yep.
And so we discussed this at a department head meeting, and we met with the representative from MIA recently, and we felt that the, there really wasn't any other interest expressed, um, with the exception from the school.
Yep.
And we felt that, you know, we'd seek funding to, um, add, install alarms for the walk-in coolers. And also, we're looking at, uh, adding a device. So I think the, so the, the alarms is for both the, both freezers at Smith Academy and the elementary school. And then we're, we're also requesting funds to add, um, the device to the-
Yeah, to convert it.
Convert it, yes. I believe that's at the high school, elementary school. Right.
Okay, all right, great. So these are grants in total of ninety-six-hundred-and-fifty dollars. It's actual work that needs to be done, those alarms are, are roughly twenty-five-hundred of that amount. And that's huge, because if something happens to those refrigerators or freezers, especially, uh, after hours, or, or even if it's during school, and nobody's in the kitchen to understand that there's been a fault, you know, in the electrical system, you're going to throw away a lot more food than twenty-five-hundred dollars worth of food, so. Probably something we'd have to move forward with regardless, but if we can get a grant to pay for it? Even better, so, uh, do we-
The total amount per municipality is ten thousand, and this again is, is for nine-thousand-six-fifty. So, uh, we're, we're hopeful, so this is our application.
We didn't have another three-hundred-and-fifty dollars, we could, you know, all right.
Plus, they're also changing the R twenty-two out, which is a good thing.
I'm sorry, they're changing the-
The refrigerant.
Oh, yes.
Because that refrigerant today is outlawed, and it's very expensive, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, great, uh, so are we moving forward, do you actually need a vote to move forward with this, or is it FYI?
I'd like a vote, and then, um, at the end of the meeting, if you sign the application.
Do we need a motion to, uh-
A motion to, uh, submit the application?
Yeah, wonderful, I'll make a motion to submit the application.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, okay. So we have six minutes, okay. The employee evaluations and contracts?
So there are employees that, um, the employee contracts that will be expiring June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Uh, the police chief, DPW director and town administrator, uh, so between now and, uh, February, those contracts are renegotiated, and in, in, in coordination with developing the budget. And just a reminder that evaluations should be completed by December thirty-first.
Right, so, so the evaluations, um, in my opinion, the evaluations of the various departments should be done by the, you know, our, our own opinion and, and our own insight as to how we feel it's happening. Sort of, uh, along those lines, though, I think that the, the liaison is sort of the, the lead, for lack of a better term, only because they normally have more of a back and forth, um, conversations, and, and, and more often than two of the other of us may or may not have. But anyways, it, it shouldn't be just one person doing the evaluation of the various, um, employees, it should be all three of us. Previous boards had a different take on it. Good, bad, or indifferent, but I, I, you know, I, I think all three of us should, should take, try to find the time, I know it's a busy time when, when it's around the holidays, but to, uh, to go through and, and then put them all together and come up with a final review.
It's much better to have three different opinions.
Yeah, exa- well, exactly, exactly, yep, so, okay. A- and we do have, um, we, we do have co- forms, I, I mean, we do have evaluation forms available.
We do, and I will make sure you have those.
They're not huge or anything, so.
I'm sorry?
We're going to start reviewing those and doing evaluation forms and everything?
Right, I will give you the evaluation forms.
We talked about, um, in the past, bringing that back up, because the, the HR department did all those forms in two thousand and ten. Where employers are evaluated?
I think you're right, I think that's part of our total review of-
The department has evaluate their employees, the selectmen evaluate the management.
Right, and I, I think to your point, Cindy, I, I think that will be part of our overall review. I don't know that we will be at that level come November, December, you know, as far as the form itself. Unless we sort of take that out of order and tweak.
To get there again, um, I think, I think, um-
But we do have one, I just-
I think, um-
There is an evaluation for it.
Yeah, Ed, you had talked about maybe going over one form every meeting we have, and just updating them all, so that we're ready to do this. And then eventually, that way, everything gets done, you had brought that up before.
Oh, okay, it's forms or the HR manual.
Yeah.
We've talked about reviewing the HR policy as well.
The policy, well, the, the forms are part of the policy, so, you know what I'm saying?
Right, the, well, what, what happens is the pol-
I'm not sure what you mean by that, but we can talk about it.
Well, yes, whether it's somebody's, if, if, whether somebody uses this form to, part of the HR policy would be to evaluate everyone every year, or every whatever, and that form is part of the whole policy, because if that's the form you use to evaluate, then-
Okay.
Right, within each chap, section, within each section of the HR manual, it refers to different types of, you know, whatever the category might be, or the subcategory might be, and then there may or may not be certain forms, you know, if you're talking about evaluations, then it would show the various evaluation forms.
Okay.
Okay. I, is there, are there any other questions as far as the, um, dates Marlene put out there for the evaluation? the evaluations and contracts at this point?
Yep.
Five minutes. We don't want to hold up our colleagues from other boards, so... Well, so, why don't we talk about topic number 10 a little bit, because we really, I don't mean, I don't know how in-depth we'd get with it anyways, but, and then we'll do our financial meeting.
I thought I would just put it out there for discussion purposes. The board has talked about the idea of a special town meeting previously. We had hoped that we would have free cash certified sooner and have a fall town meeting. And since, you know, we are not expecting free cash to be certified as early as September, the board felt that we'd be, you know, we are looking at sometime, you know, the middle of November, could be late November, and then at that time, we're getting into the holidays. So, we are looking at January, and at that point, we are very busy developing the fiscal year budget and reviewing annual town meeting warrant articles. So, I have been approached by, you know, the couple of the residents on Straits Road who are interested in looking at tying into town water, and I'm also aware that Open Space Committee was awarded a grant for White Rock Trail, recreational trail up on Horse Mountain, and that's a reimbursable grant. So, we're looking at an article to authorize funds for that expense to improve it.
Do you happen to know at this point if there's a timeframe as to when we would need to apply for that grant or approve this funding?
For the recreational trail?
Yeah.
I've had a conversation with Mark Delott. It can wait until annual town meeting. It's not necessary that it happens sooner.
All right. I'm not, you know, we just need to know all the facts going in.
And I have also, you know, conversed with Bob Wagner, a chairman of the planning board regarding the retail marijuana moratorium. And it appears to me there is some time for that. He...
To change our, by all, or I mean our towns, to change all...
Planning board, right, we'd be amending the zoning bylaws to add...
Whatever the recommendation is, right.
An article, right, and planning board would be required to have a hearing.
Right.
It's part of the process.
Yep.
And how many days prior, if we have a special town meeting, we have to have some...
14 days notice for a special town meeting.
That's the, you know, the legal public notice, but of course, we have to get the word out, you know, much way before then.
That's correct. There's, I mean, and there's a cost to having a town meeting, so, you know, right now, you could say, just, you know, for this scenario, three articles.
My own personal view on special town meetings is if it's something it has, which is why I asked you about the $33,000 for the hiking trail, for White Rock Recreation. You know, if there's money on the line or services on the line, or something, your grant's on the line, or something you're going to miss out on transferring funds because you have the free cash, I think that's sort of one thing. If the effect of not having a town meeting doesn't change the outcome of what the vote would have been anyways, whether you have it in January or whether you have it in May, I don't know what the advantage is. I mean, that's, that's my opinion of it. So, I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, I mean, tonight, we should get a better idea where we might get free cash, so maybe this should be a topic for discussion at our next meeting.
At our next meeting. We can talk about it more than once.
Continue to this meeting.
Let me move this to the next meeting and bring it up then.
I'm good with that. As far as this particular topic, does anybody have any other questions or comments for Marlene or otherwise? All right. So, it is 6:30, and...
We're going to come back to all the business after this meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Our business, great. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Basically, what we're doing is we're going out of order right now, so we're going to take up topic 14, which is a meeting with the finance committee, so that we can get an update on the fiscal year '17 and '18 reconciliation. It was scheduled for 6:30. We also have the board of assessors here in the audience.
Can I have the students?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I know there were some conflicts.
Sean said he would be here, right? I saw his email.
Okay. It's an informational, you know, get-an-update type meeting, so whether there's a quorum or not, there's not any votes.
Right. You're going to appoint the representative for the Capitol...
Whoever's not here gets appointed.
That's how you do it.
The chairman of the finance committee, as we don't have a lot of them. Thank you.
Yeah. Hey, Derek.
Laura Lee, could you come up? Come on. Thank you.
Hi, Jenny. Is that simply to speak into, or they should just leave it where it is and it'll be loud enough to pick up?
I'll crank it up.
Okay. All right. Thank you, John. All right. So, we've got some members of the finance committee, we've got the members of the assessors, and we have our financial team, treasurer, collector, and the accountant here. And really, what we're doing is we're going to receive an update on where we stand with the, excuse me, reconciliation of 2017 and 2018, the reconciliation of the status within the town via those departments. So, I guess I would ask or turn it over to, I don't know who wants to go first, but...
I guess all of them.
All right. So Derek is the town accountant, for those of you who don't know Derek. And part of this is to, by the way, this is where the reconciliation needs to take place for a couple of different things. Needs to take place to have the state certify our free cash, and by the way, correct me if I say something wrong. We need to be at a certain level come mid-November so that we can do our tax classification. Did I get that right? So, this is an update as to where we stand at this point for fiscal year 2017.
So, going forward, working with Justin from Bay State, he put together a schedule if he wants to have at least two months' worth of reconciled revenue going on the general ledger. I'd like to push that to three if we can do it, just because two a week gets us six weeks out, and then we're still going to have some cleanup to do, some closing entries, so it's going to be a couple of weeks after that. If we can get three on, obviously, we're going to save some time. July's looking, I'll just go by the months. July's looking really well. There's a couple, we have to go through a couple reclasses that I could work with Laura Lee on, but there's a couple, a couple little minor things that I'm coming across that if we can't reconcile, we'll move it into what's called an unapplied revenue, which means that we just, we can identify the transaction, but there's something that's not 100% with it. That will swing around towards the end, which is that couple of weeks I said after we're done, we're still going to have some cleanup to do. August, and I have set some dates, this Thursday, I want to get July put on the books. So, if I don't have everything I need by then, we're just going to slot it over to those other accounts and at least get what we can on the books.
Okay. So, if I could interrupt you for one second, I'm sorry. And, you know, a lot of this, we've all heard before, the terminology, but, you know, I just want to make sure people understand. So, our goal is to have, again, correct me if I'm wrong, our goal is to have by first week of November or so, the first six months completed. Is that fair to say? That puts us in good shape?
Is that two weeks out? Yeah, that's what I'm shooting for.
So, a lot of what happens is the collector, or the treasurer and the collector go through their processes. That information goes to the town accountant, he goes through his processes, and then that's where, if there's any sort of, things aren't matching up exactly, that's where they've got to get back together and figure things out.
Correct.
In layman's terms. So, we're almost done with July, so you hope to basically get two months done every two weeks. Did I say that right?
Every week.
Every week? All right.
Have to get them done every week.
So, July and August, let's say, should be completed by next week?
This Friday.
This Friday? Oh, so we're sitting pretty. All right. And then September, October, by the end of next week?
September is scheduled to go on the GL Tuesday.
General ledger on Tuesday.
General ledger Tuesday. That's as far as I've kind of gotten right now.
But that's the first quarter.
That's the first quarter by next Tuesday.
All right. When Tuesday is October 17. Okay. All right.
Basically, it's going real well. Like I said, there's just the reclass, and as we go through the reclassing, that'll get easier and easier, because they'll kind of roll forward on us. So, like, if we're reclassifying something in July, that'll reclassify it August, going forward. So, those reclasses should get smaller every month.
Right. And if I'm not mistaken, those first few months, are they not more manual to...
Correct.
To do or to update, you know, whatever the proper term is, because we sort of went live with a new online system in October?
Yes, in the middle of October. I found, and I think Derek's going to find the same thing, is that those first three and a half months were challenging, but once we hit November, it really smoothed out nicely, you know, which I've mentioned to Derek, so he should fall into that.
And there was also a couple of transactions that we weren't capturing in the past through a system that we have now, health and life insurance and stuff like that, which is kind of a process to get some source document for that. And like Laura Lee was saying, when we get into the October, Novembers, those are starting to flow through Zobrio now, which is picking up.
Did you have anything else you wanted to say? I mean, I didn't, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, that was basically it, that, you know, at least we've got the first quarter scheduled, but after that, I'm still working and going through October right now. You got to go through it a couple of times, one with the budget and the cherry sheet and the grant stuff.
Yeah. The gentleman that Derek mentioned in the company is Justin Cole from Bay State, is a firm that we've been using to assist with the financials, whose expertise is in municipal government financial systems. So, that's who we've been using to offer assistance when necessary. Did you have a question or a comment, either of you, before I turn it over to the finance committee to ask any sort of questions, or...
No, I'm, I'm going to wait on my questions until after.
Oh, okay.
And I'll wait also, because I did have just a couple, but I'll wait until it's a good roll at once.
All right. Our friends over on the finance committee are here with us. Did you have any particular comments or questions? Hi, Gerald.
I was reading the emails as they came, so thank you, everybody. But I just want to verify that we had gotten this projected reconciliation schedule from you a while back, and we were all a little bit curious about Justin's role. And so, did he complete, did he finalize the treasurer's bank recons as you had hoped?
No. The treasurer's office did the treasurer's recons.
Okay. So, that's, that was written...
Justin worked with completed, he will be working with completed treasurer's bank recons, but my office did the recons themselves.
Okay.
Ourselves.
Thank you. So, they're done?
They're done.
Yeah.
Ron from the board of assessors?
How much did that cost?
What?
To have this consultant come in to help him?
We don't have a final number. He's been helping everybody.
But he's got a rough idea.
Yeah. Well, I mean...
I don't have the number with me. I can email that to you tomorrow?
He signed a contract.
You must have an idea, it was $40,000 plus?
No.
Oh, no.
No, no.
No? It's less than that.
Much less.
We set aside money.
Right. It's in the town administrator's budget.
But it's not so many hours per week, Ron? That's why we're not dodging the question. Some weeks are more or less hours than other weeks, so I, you know, I don't know what the running tally is at this point. Stan?
So, I'd like to build on your question, because I think that's very, very important, because from the beginning on 9/4 all the way up to 11/10, to me, it's just mishmash. And important mishmash, by the way. So, because 9/4 starts it, 11/10 ends it, so it's important to know where we are in this whole process. So, 9/4 is done, correct? Which is BMAG certifying, that's done. Next one is 9/6, J. Call BMAG onsite to work with accountant side of recon. Is it done?
He showed up, but we didn't...
Is he done? The question is, is he done?
We didn't have all the information to work with at that point.
So, it's not done?
We didn't have any information to work with on that day, so no. We didn't accomplish anything.
Okay. So, not done. 9/18, accountant side of first quarter FY '17 recon completed and on the GL. Done or not done?
I just went over all that.
That was on Tuesday, right?
Well, but I think it would, it would be helpful to hear these things again.
Done or not done?
Not done.
Not done.
But that's what you had targeted for Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, targeted for Tuesday. So, that's a month late. So, that's 30 days off at this point. So, now we're back 30 days. Okay. 9/22, J. Call BMAG will finalize the treasurer's bank recons for second quarter. Done or not done?
Yeah, they didn't finalize, you know, I think this was actually written by Marlene, if I'm not mistaken.
No, this is a schedule that Justin put together.
Well, he didn't...
We all agreed to.
Right. Justin put the schedule...
He didn't work on the treasurer's bank recons, though. He's working with them. He didn't actually complete them.
So, not done.
No, the treasurer's, yeah, no.
Done.
All of 17 treasurer's bank recons were done October 1st.
Finalized.
Yes.
Okay. 10/6, accountant side of second quarter FY '17 recon completed and on the GL. Done or not done?
Not done.
Not done. 10/9, that's yesterday, J. Call will finalize the treasurer's bank recons for the third quarter. Done? Not done?
We want to use the word "have" instead of finalize, right?
Right.
He'll get them. He'll receive them.
Okay. So, he will get them. So, that's...
He'll receive.
Okay. So, that's not done.
It is done, because all of the treasurer's bank recons were completed by 10/1.
Okay. So, those are all, okay, so those are all done. Okay. So, everything that says treasurer's recons are done. Okay. So, now, we're catching up on the accountant's side of the recon and the accountant's side of the first quarter and the accountant quarter, accountant's side of the second quarter, and we need to work on the accountant's side of the third quarter, and that's supposed to be done by 10/23. If you recall what I said when we were here the last time, if we fall behind, we should all be sitting around this table coming up with a recovery plan. Based on this original schedule, do we have a recovery plan?
Well, Derek is, Derek is working with Justin, so let me just say this, Stan, and I hear where you're coming from, but we need to clarify a couple of things, which is, just because a report has been submitted, it doesn't mean it doesn't need to be reviewed.
Correct.
And then if there's a discrepancy, you need to go back and work on it. That's the point that we're at.
Well, I get all, I get all that.
Well, I just want to make sure you do and everyone who's watching, so...
Okay. Well, I get it. Okay, well, I, I get it. But because we, we haven't even accomplished first quarter on some of this stuff, and I understand you gotta go back and you have to clarify, and you have to update, and sometimes you don't have a receipt, and stuck in somebody's truck somewhere.
These are also handed off to me on ten-one, so I didn't get to start my piece.
And, and as I said, the starting date and the ending date are irrelevant to me, as long as we hit the ending date, because the ending date is eleven-ten. So if we hit eleven-ten, given two weeks to get all the forms filled out to push to the DOR, best case scenario is we're looking at setting a tax rate for the town of Hatfield in the beginning of December. Any of this falls apart, we run the risk of going over in past twelve-thirty-one, and then we have no revenue. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
That's a fair statement.
Understood.
So that's why I'm being pointed in direct in regards to where we're sitting on this schedule, because it's critical. We need to have that critical path moving forward. So anytime that we stumble, we need to have a recovery plan. If we don't have a recovery plan, then we're just wandering around the room in the dark looking for the light switch. I mean, I, I think we need to... So I, I guess, I guess that's all I have to say.
Well, I, I think to your point, and it's well taken, you know, but that's why you have the dates, that's why we had the dates, right? That, you know, you have to have a plan, and that's what you shoot for, and, you know, some, some of the dates were hit, and some weren't for various reasons. But Derek and Laura Lee seem confident that, again, to your point, you know, next week, the, uh, next week, that first quarter's gonna be done and posted to the General Ledger. And again, they've been working not only together and individually, but along with that, the financial, the accounting firm that's, that's been assisting us as well. The word is out that we're setting the tax rate when we're supposed to set the tax rate.
Okay. I'm on your side.
I know.
I'd just like to add that Derek and I have had conversations, and Derek has agreed to, you know, put in extra hours if necessary. I know he was in over the weekend. Laura Lee, the same, she had been putting in extra hours and, and working weekends as well. But again, you know, for, for Derek's side of this, he, he just started the process last week, having received the information last week.
I, I sent this, the second six months was sent out on October tenth, but the, the first quarter, that, that was sent off a while ago. I mean, I can look at those dates, but it was a few months back, so. If you look at the bottom of the spreadsheet, you see the dates that that stuff was sent over, so that's not, that's not something that went over on October first. Just the last six months just went over recently, ten days ago.
Weren't you still working on that stuff, though?
Okay, guys.
I, I'm just-
I understand, Derek. So just, and it's something I alluded to before, and, you know, this is always a touchy subject for the, the outsider looking in to say, everyone's doing their best, and we're, we're submitting the information, but if there's any part of that information that's incorrect, it, it slows us all down, and we gotta get it corrected. And, and I think we're all aware of that. So, okay, Ron?
Well, my concern is, this is the second year we're on the fast track with the DOR that was agreed to by everyone here. And my concern is, we're not gonna meet it again. In plain English, and everyone agreed to it, and every, and second year, I hear various excuses. I'm not pointing the finger, but, you know, this isn't right.
All I can say, Ron, is there's a lot of positive things have been done. DOR has been in contact with us, they've come down here, we've been talking with them. I think everybody together, working together, has put some kind of plan together. We've gotten some professional help to help guide us through this process, 'cause we know that we don't wanna go through this next year, so I think we're, we're getting closer to get things to work. I think we are. And I hope we are, because we've put a lot of time, effort, and investment into make sure that we meet this, so. I can't talk for two years ago. I've only, I haven't been on the board two years. I haven't even been on there one year, so. I think this board right here has been working hard to try to get on top of things, and, and figure things out, and, and make sure if we need professional help, we're getting it, and, and trying to get all the team players to work together as one. So, building on that, if I may, Brian.
Yeah, go ahead, Stan.
Okay, building on, on Ed's comments, I think we were given an initial schedule, and I think it would be extremely helpful to now revisit the schedule and put some accurate dates in here again, and then realign ourselves and, and move forward and, and shoot the new target. Wherever they land, they land in regards to the dates, but I think it's important that, that every time we have any slippage, we, we immediately update the schedule, and we bump it forward, pull it back, and it becomes a moving target, but at least we're, we're not anxious.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. You're welcome.
So Justin did this one, but Marlene, are you gonna do a?
This was an arrangement that Justin and Derek had discussed, and Derek had forwarded that to me. I put it on a spreadsheet. A, a few weeks ago, I had followed up with Justin to ask him if, if, if those dates had changed. He said he was pretty much still on target with those dates. I know Derek has weekly conference calls with him Wednesday morning. I don't know if Justin has indicated a change in those dates.
No, he was just shooting for two weeks.
I think it's a good idea, though.
Two months every week.
Two months a week, right, on the accountant's side.
Maybe that's something worth just running by him, Derek, if you don't mind, or Marlene, you know, whoever's gonna talk to him tomorrow, just say, listen.
Can we have this just rewritten?
Yeah, we had a meeting, and we're just looking for some updated dates, and, and whatever department is responsible for those dates.
And I, and I think along with these dates, Derek, I think it would be, I think it would be helpful, because I know that some of this is, is challenging in regards to not having a receipt or having an issue, that if you were to say, well, go back to the nine-six date, we had to revise that to this, I'm about ninety percent complete, and I have a couple of things to clean up, at least we would know a percentage of completion, or how close we were to the target. As opposed to, you know, it's not done, but we don't know how much is not done. But if we knew it was ninety percent done, and you had a few receipts, or a department head was holding on to something, then we would know that, okay, for the most part, done, for the most part, done, oh, challenge is here, then we would have a better idea of how close we are. But when, when we come in here and we're not done with these items, I don't know how close or how far out we are from, from everything, and I don't know-
Status.
Right, yeah, kind of a stat, and I, and I don't know what type of, I, I think I would have a better comfort level knowing where we, we sat with certain things.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, Sean.
No problem. And I think you mentioned this, but just, I'd like to make sure I note it. On the second quarter fiscal year seventeen, for the ten-six date, what's your projected timeline for completing that? Projected date?
The second quarter?
The second quarter, accountant side of the second quarter recon.
Haven't projected that far out, but if we're looking at twice, two every week, two this week, two next week, so probably by the end of the, end of the month, right? Okay, if we're looking at two a week, two-
Twenty-four.
Yeah, so.
Two weeks from today, so twenty-four.
Well, I'll say by the twenty-seventh, by the end of the week.
That Friday.
Two on the twelfth and the thirteenth, and one on the seventeenth, and I'll try and get the next quarter in within the next week and a half there.
So that eleven-ten date is gonna be real tight.
Well, I, I think, buil-, buil-, building on, on the new projected, because he has, there, there has been some slippage in here for, for various reasons, that if it gets bumped two weeks, it looks like your eleven-ten's gonna really be around beginning of December, and with two weeks of any type of internal reconciliation that we have to do, we probably won't be setting a tax rate until mid-December, best case scenario. That would be my guess. But we could still, we could still have our recap, though, right?
I was just going to say, we should still be able to have that, what we need to do is have the, the recap completed. That should be completed, correct, Jenny, by the time we have the tax classification hearing?
I prefer it that way, but it does not have to be, yes.
And, yeah, we typically like to have it.
Yeah, we like to have it.
Right, we do. So we're shooting to have the, the tax classification hearing. We, we had a target date of November fifteenth. If we can have it sooner, the week before, even better. But again, a lot of those numbers on the recap come from the accountant.
Sure.
Before we just go too far from it, a lot of the questions are coming up of what days, and what does Justin say? I think we agreed last time that it was gonna be one point of contact with Justin, that company was gonna be you.
That's correct.
Because you're saying, have you had connect, so, is Derek contacted you have a day? So I think if we stick with that, it's gonna be more orderly.
I, I made a note. I, I know Derek has a conference call with him tomorrow morning, and I will send an email to Justin asking him, and, and if he has the opportunity, which I would hope he would, when he's talking with, with Derek, to go over those dates, and then Derek can pass that on to me.
Daryl.
Cindy, apparently, she, she, she got my point. I think Justin needs to be brought into the loop. I hate for us to make updates that we think we're gonna come up to without Justin's input on that, so. Cindy hit it, hit it off, thank you.
Sure. Does Derek or Laura Lee have anything you wanted to say?
No, I, I think that the, the two, two months per week is, is a, is a good goal. Like I said, I'd like to push it to three if we can possibly do it, but, like you mentioned, it all depends upon what kind of source documentation I have. If it's all there, and it's just a matter of checking it off, it could go quick. I will say that, that like Laura Lee mentioned, that the first couple of months transitioning was difficult, excuse me, it was difficult, but like she said, as she got into November and stuff, it started to pick up. So I think that-
Yeah, I'm hoping he runs into the same thing.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm hoping to-
So aren't all we?
You know, and I think that it's just, just a matter of getting, nailing down a couple of those transactions. But I am setting deadlines. If I don't have those transactions figured out, it's, it's going on. So we will meet the two week, I'm sorry, two months per week. It's just a matter of how big that unapplied revenue account gets. All we're doing is kicking the can until the end of the process.
And I think we, most of us, or all of us, probably understand that there's that type, type of thing that happened. It's not as easy as taking this amount of money in one department, putting it in this department. We realize that.
I, I will say, there's probably between two and seven transactions I'm trying to track down for July, August, and September. And then it's the reclass file that I have to work with Laura Lee on, actually get some training from her on how to just adjust some of that stuff and, and clean up some of those accounts.
So do you guys feel we're on target, or should we be doing something differently?
I think it's just a matter of, you just gotta grind through the work at this point, you know, it's just a matter of getting it done. And I, and I think we've got the good, good process in place right now, it's just a matter of, of, you know, jumping down, catching Laura Lee for a quick second.
And the process is working.
It is.
Process is working, and things are moving along.
I'm sending out emails, Laura Lee's getting stuff back from me.
I came in over the weekend, and I pulled everything Derek requested, scanned it, and got it out to him, so he would have it when he came in, you know, this morning, so. You know, I'll continue to, you know, to respond to him as quickly as I can, so he can keep going.
Great. You know, it, it seems, it's been a long, it's still, it hasn't ended, obviously, but it's been a long process. But I, at least from our perspective, well, I don't wanna speak for my colleagues, but I think from our pers-, but I think from our perspective, and hopefully from yours, you can see the light at the end of the tunnel now, right? I mean, so, you know, I, I think getting that first quarter nailed down once and for all, we're close, you know, a few more days, hopefully, that'll be done. Then that second quarter, and that brings you into where we went live with that new system. You know, so hopefully, the, the last, the last two quarters are just, I don't wanna say you're gonna blow right through, but should, should be less painful for all of you involved than, than the first six months.
And I've, I've, you know, I'm, I'm working on eighteen right now, so I'm, you know, reconcile in July, and, you know, so all of my, I mean, you know, the cash is good, all of the bank statement balances as of June thirtieth is exactly what is in our cash management system, so. You know, we've got, you know, a couple of issues that I'm working with Justin relating to, you know, Tom coming up with starting figures as far as money clearing and not clearing, but it's, it's, it's good, you know, it looks like some things, you know, have been found, maybe, so.
Right. And I think that what, I think what's happened, again, as an outsider looking in, I, I think for both departments, it seems to me that, not only in getting this done, but working with Justin and, and others with some, with some many, many years of background, has helped you guys in, in a learning process. I think what a lot of people don't realize, or maybe they do, is everything has to match from all the various departments to the penny. To the penny. So if something doesn't match, you know, one department's short a penny from the other department, they gotta find it. And those are, those are the things that bog, that are time-consuming and bog people down. But, but it's part of the process, so, so we have to do it, so. Okay. Stan?
Just in closing, when should we get together again, just for a temperature check?
Well, our next meeting is, we can have one sooner, but our next meeting is the beginning of November.
Right, we may have to have a meeting between now and November fifteenth.
Oh, yeah.
But I was going to say, we will be meeting on the fifteenth for the tax classification hearing, or sooner on the eighth, if, if we're ready.
You, you mean in November?
November.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
You good with that? That's a month from now. It's also, but-
I, I think we're, I think in, in just looking at the schedule, I think that it, it's all gonna get kinda bumped anyways. Is everybody else comfortable with, because we're al-, we're already a month, and I, and once you hit eleven-fifteen, you're a month and a half away from the end of the year. Then you've got holidays, then you've got all, all those things, so your, your working days are gonna dwindle pretty quickly. And then, I don't know if there's vacations or whatever else happens, whether, you know, the, the accountant that's assisting us is gone. We should probably know if he's going on vacation or something, because if, if there's any glitches in here, this is definitely gonna bump us to the beginning of the year. So I just wanna make sure that everybody else here is comfortable with the middle of November.
Yeah. Well, I, what I would, yes, I agree. So Stan, or Jenny, when does, you know, what are our dates? I, I mean, when, when do we have to have meetings and dates and votes and classification hearings, et cetera?
So the first three dates were our values, were submitted to the DR.
Saw your email, thank you.
Yes, so that's all done on our end.
Yep.
Classification hearing is set for November the fifteenth, right now. I spoke with Marlene, and, 'cause the classification hearing is, all you're doing is voting a single factor of one. So we can still have this hearing.
That's a target date that we set for ourselves.
That's okay, I just wanna-
And, and we, you know, in the past, have had the tax classification hearing later. And it, it is possible, but we're certainly trying to stick with that schedule.
Last year, last year, last year.
It doesn't matter, does it?
No, well, last year-
We can, we can have the tax classification, doesn't matter when we have it, it's the other stuff that's gonna get done.
That's correct. We can do the recapitulation, our values are all approved, we can, so we can, you can vote on the single tax rate or, or double.
Right. But what you're reporting on the recap, though, is fiscal year seventeen numbers, correct? And those are, those should be accurate numbers. Eighteen are estimated numbers. And those are generally the numbers that we used for town meeting. But seventeen, you wanna be certain of those numbers, and that is-
Well, and I think also, we need to remember, everybody's focusing on that sheet. We also, stuff needs to be being put into Gateway. There's nothing put in Gateway, and there's numbers that can be put in Gateway right now.
What's Gateway?
Ga-, sorry.
That's a software program that DOR uses for reporting, municipalities report.
So electronic recap is.
Yeah.
Right. So my question is, what numbers can we plug in on Gateway?
And by whom?
At this time?
Well, by whom, it's really just me and Derek that plug all the numbers in.
So you guys, okay.
Probably the estimated eighteen revenues.
Right, those, yeah, estimated numbers can get plugged in.
I mean, I would have to pull them up with that. Look, the O L one can be done, we've already started that. Lydia's is done, Laura Lee's is done.
So we're making progress?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I just wanna make-
But there's still a lot of stuff that has to be put on there.
Sure, understood.
Right, there's several sections to it.
So that's, that's a good point. Whatever we can put in with our free time while Derek is, is busy trying to get this.
The A two is always a huge issue with the R.
Yep.
Laura Lee and Phil and I and Derek, Phil got that stuff before he left for vacation, so we have everything from him that we need, including the memo. So, I mean, that stuff just needs to be started plugging up, you know.
And who plugs in that data? That you're referring to the-
Generally, I plug it in.
Okay. Alright.
Does it have to be you?
I was just gonna ask that question.
Yeah, you don't think it has to be?
No, I've told them.
Well, the reason we're asking is because we know you're-
No, I've told them, because I used to help Mike.
We can do things in parallel.
Right.
And that's, I think, where you were leading.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I used to help Michael, him and I would do it together, so. 'Cause we're the last two that sign off on, well, we are, and then, so, I mean, I can, I've told them that I can help in any way that I, you know.
Let me see, let me take a look at some forms tomorrow, see if maybe I can, maybe the estimated numbers.
Okay.
We can crank them.
Mike?
Quick question. Could someone, could someone summarize what's at stake here in terms of the reconciliation? I knew that the R was withholding some amount of free cash up until we did something. And I don't know if that's the reconciliation of fiscal seventeen, and submission of, of, of certain forms to the- certain forms to the D O R or what have you. But I, you know, what was that amount that they're, they're, they're withholding at this point? I know it was well over $100,000.
Yeah, it was a few hundred thou- so-
And, and they're not gonna release that until we, until we do the 17.
Right, that'll be part of the overall free cash certification.
Yes.
Right, yeah?
Right.
And, and how about if, if the tax rate is delayed, the setting of the tax rate is delayed? As Stan has pointed out, there's been some slippage. It looks like some of those initial dates on that schedule aren't likely to be met, but everyone's gonna chip in and try to get back on schedule. But, so what happens if the tax rate is delayed and it's not set until January?
Well, yeah.
There's obviously an impact on the revenue stream?
There is, there is.
Yeah. Well, then, you know, the bills aren't gonna have a due date until May 1st, so you, you know, you lose, um-
Right, you know, you lose all that.
Yeah, you lose the February date. And it also means that abatements aren't due until, um, you know, May 1st as well, which pushes that out 90 days for the assessors to react to that. And, you know, we had this happen to us a, a couple of years back, and, you know, if you remember, things were pretty tight, actually had to stop spending for about, you know, 30 days. We just barely squeaked by without borrowing, so. But the, the biggest impact, if the bills are not postmarked by December 31st, um-
By December 31st.
Is, by December 31st.
Okay.
Yes, and, um, you know, so the biggest impact that the town's gonna face if, if that happens to us is gonna be cash flow.
Great. And I like the, perhaps having tomorrow.
Perhaps, perhaps, um, perhaps, short term. Um, you know, most likely, you know, hopefully that won't, um, you know, cause Derek and I will work very closely on-
Sure.
Yeah.
Expenditures.
That's right.
Yeah, so, so the good news is, that's not gonna happen.
It's on, on tape, you know?
I know.
I, I'm torn, because, you know, I feel like I have a lot of confidence in you guys right now. It sounds like you're doing it, but then you don't seem not convinced yourselves, I feel like, I don't know.
I, I feel actually pretty, I feel pretty good about things, I-
You owe me dinner.
You know, I really do.
You can owe me dinner.
I, I really think that we're definitely better this year, as far as where we are, by far, over where we were last year.
Where we were last year.
That's right. And, and the thing of it is, is, is this year, we're doing it ourselves, you know, we're doing it here in-house, we get it, you know, all my bank balances and the cash, everything's coming out, everything, you know, um, you know, it just, it makes sense. It's, it's something that, you know, it's, it's, it's our work and we, and we get it and we can explain it. That's a whole lot different than where we were last year, and I feel pretty good about my office.
Brian, my next question is, it sounds to me, as a layperson here, that, that Derek, the onus is really on Derek. He's gotta reconcile 12 months of fiscal 17 within the next, what, month and a half?
Yeah.
Does he need assistance?
He does have it.
He's gonna, that's Justin's, Justin's, and he couldn't start this until we were, until Laura Lee was ready, so it was really a handoff.
The team, right.
It's, it's a team approach and so.
Okay, so, so one of Justin's responsibilities is to assist Derek in doing the, the financial transactions, the planning transactions, that will reconcile each month of fiscal 17 and have that done within the next several weeks.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody have-
And that's, that just comes down to just, you gotta pull the source documentation together. I mean, that's, you know, that's why Justin's predicting two months per week, you know, that's, that's reasonable based on what we, what we have here, you know? And, and actually with the emails I've been sending out with the missing turnovers, people have been really quick turning those around to me. If we can keep that momentum going-
We will.
We should be able to, to nail down all those missing transactions. Then it just comes down to a couple funky transactions Laura Lee and I need to nail down, and then we just put them on the ledger.
Yeah, Derek and I have already spoken about a process for when a legit, uh, what we would consider a legitimate amount of time to respond to an email for, request for information doesn't come in, we'll have a conversation with whoever needs to happen. Yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
And not only that, but I, Mike, I've also set deadlines. So if I don't have the information by that point, I will document what I don't have and the revenue's going on the books.
As long as you feel comfortable with the, the next six weeks.
We're, we're within, the first quarter, we're probably missing 15 total transactions, so I, I have no problem putting those in, but they're coming in now. I, I have a feeling of most of them.
Two things.
Yes, sir.
Remember what I said the last joint meeting? I'm not gonna repeat it. That's number one. And number two, who's the young lady sitting at the table in W?
Oh, you guys weren't here during the introduction, I'm sorry, Linda Sossi. Linda Sossi is the newest member of our executive assistant staff.
Welcome.
And, yeah.
Thank you.
And we're, we're in very good hands with, with Linda's background and Linda's personality, the townspeople are in good shape. I did actually introduce Linda at the beginning of our meeting, I, you know, I'm sorry.
You were just-
All right.
I didn't have to kick you in the-
No, you didn't. All right. Thank you, financial team.
Thank you very much for the board and finance committee.
Yep, thank you guys for coming.
Thank you. Finance committee, we need to meet.
We do need to meet.
You all set with us?
Yeah, unless you had questions, comments, or anything? Just thanks for being here. Just wanted, you know, we want everyone to hear the update, so that's, you know-
Sounds like it's going good.
Need a minute?
I just wanted to speak to Darryl real quick, it's kind of-
Yep. Hey, John, you mind if we just take a five-minute recess? Sorry.
Darryl?
All right, thank you. So that wraps up our meeting with the financial team. Under continual business, Marlene, we have topic 11, the community compact grant update.
Right, and we, D O R is, is working with us on updating the town's financial policies, and I have received communication from representative at the technical assistance bureau, Marcia Bohink, and she has informed me that the policy manual is basically complete, it's working its way through the review process.
Great.
She is hopeful that it will be finalized by next week. So hopefully we'll hear something next week from her and we'll review those financial policies.
And those are, so those policies are, the state's putting together, the local services is putting together on the town of Hatfield's behalf? I mean, I'm sure it's somewhat of a boilerplate-
Correct.
But then they're tweaking it to-
Right, I forwarded to her the financial policies we had in place.
Oh, I gotcha, okay.
She's expanding upon them.
Got it, with the newest, latest, and greatest rules, laws, regulations.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, throughout this process, she has, well, she came out here-
Yep.
And, and met with the treasurer, collector, and accountant, and on occasion has communicated with them either email or telephone and just, you know, sort of trying to circle back on, on the process, how they process their, their workload.
Okay, great. Any questions on that from Marlene, Ed or Cindy?
No, no.
Okay.
No, it's been continuing, yep.
All right. Well, we, we touched upon this a little bit, our next topic, which is the White Rock Recreational Trail Grant.
Yes.
We touched upon it when we talked about-
We did.
The potential for a special town meeting, so.
Right. So just the, the town-
It's, we're, we're receiving a grant, but it's a reimbursable grant.
It is a reimbursable grant.
For the amount of $32,094.
Right, and this is for construction of a hiking trail up on Horse Mountain.
Okay.
So, and thank you to holding space.
More to follow on that, of course. Yep. Smith Academy Park renovations, the update for bids?
Tomorrow, we open bids for the first phase of, of the construction, and that's pretty much right, the landscaping. The next phase will be the construction of a gazebo.
Right.
Some bids will be opened tomorrow and recorded, and those will be reviewed with the architect, Martha Lyon, and the open space committee. And I would expect within the next couple of weeks, a recommendation will come forward to the Board of Selectmen.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Yep. Any other continued old business? Ed, do you have anything?
No, we're good.
Under old business, Cindy, do you have anything?
Yes, I do, just a couple, please.
Sure.
Um, I did that one. I, I was hoping to have the executive side create a letter, compose a letter for, cause we, it's come up a couple times, brought it up with the H C O G, now going by H C Z. I'd like to compose a letter to ha- to set, have them sent, send it to the offices. And the reason I wanna do that now, even if everybody's not in agreement, I'd like to have it and we can look at it and then discuss it for the future meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Because the way the H C O G works is, you have to give them notice if any time in the next year, you have to give them 12 months' notice if you're gonna, going to vote at town meeting to withdraw from their services, okay? So it talked about it in May, I guess it was, and the latest, I, I read the, the audit letters in the, in the newspaper, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has stated that they don't know if 12 months from now that they will still be in existence financially feasibly. They said the way it is running now, that they cannot guarantee that 12 months from now, they'll still be above water. I know Belcher Town just recently voted to stay in, Hadley recently, or not, excuse me, Hadley also sent a letter that they were looking to withdraw.
Yeah, I saw that.
But I'd like to do that letter right away in case we choose to, or the town chooses to with a vote.
So it's kinda get a letter on file?
Yeah, so if you have a letter on file, you don't have to say, oh, well, yeah, we wanna do this, and then you gotta wait another year. So I'd like to do that. Again, they had, this was along with the article where everyone that works for that company or that organization, that county organization, got another bonus this year. They're saying that they're feasible, they don't know if they'll be in business a year from now, but everyone got a bonus again, all 14 employees. I think the highest one was $10,000, I believe. So I just-
You are recommending-
Just, yes, that we-
A letter be sent to them?
That, yes, you can compose a letter and then we could maybe look at it at the next meeting, put it on the agenda, see if we think, you know, if, if we like the way it's worded, if we think it's a good idea to do that. I think it's a good idea to do that, and I'd like to discuss it further, but if we can get that letter, we know what we're saying a little bit, just a draft, you know, nothing, just formal. But basically, we'd just be two with, you know, that we draw from-
That we are considering it, you know, that we are considering drawing. So they have to be, they have to give a notice that we are looking to withdraw, you know? And it, it has to go to town meeting anyway.
You know, it has to be a town vote to withdraw.
Right. I think, I, I guess, and I don't have a problem with drafting something, and then we can have further discussion about it, I guess, or we can discuss it now, whatever. I just, I, I think what we, I think what we would need to know, or at least I would like to know, pre- previous to doing that, or at least sending, and I know you, you alluded to the fact we'll have more conversation about, but, you know, I think it's important to know what we're getting from H C O G in savings and benefits. I mean, I, I totally understand, we don't wanna be held to something should we choose to remove ourselves down the road, but I also, you know, just wanna be cautious that we're not sending a letter of, just in case, you know, a year from now we, we make that decision, that's all.
Right, I'd like to see us make that decision, you know, be upfront with you, but I've, and I've saved everything, the, the audit information and everything else, I've got all that, I'll, I'll bring that to the next meeting. But when I'm looking at it, I mean, we've had a lot of issues, and Marlene has been looking into our tech contracts that we have through-
Well, yeah, look at another, other options for service.
Looking at other options, and, and it's not the only thing, but a, a lot of these things have, but I'm finding out, have like a middleman fee on it, there's like an extra 6% on certain things.
Right.
You know, so they say we're getting a discount, but you don't really see that.
Well, that's what I, yeah, well, that's what I mean, you gotta do the math and figure out.
And I think we can do better in a lot of these things, and the I T being one of them.
Right, part of, and, and, I'm not defending them, I'm sort of being a devil's advocate, you know?
Yeah.
Part of what they offer, though, is because we don't have huge staffs of people to, to do a lot of the, the legwork and, and looking into certain things, you know, regardless of whatever the topic may be, you know, they, they are the middleman and, and can do a lot of that. I, I mean, and you're right, part of what we are told we're saving is, you know, the, the group savings, because multiple communities are part of it, and that's why, I, you know, I think if we could sort of, and I, I don't know how you break it, I don't know if they send it or we've gotta dig it up, but, you know, depending, the, besides what the I T and, and Marlene and, and what the D P W, you know, what are we saving? You know, and is it or isn't it worth it, right? It's a business decision for us.
It is, and I can tell you with fuel, I have the numbers on that, but we were paying 50% more per gallon for gasoline for the D P W trucks this past year.
Well, that was because we didn't meet the consumption.
Right.
That was the reason why.
That wasn't their fault, though.
So for two years, a minimum of two years in a row, we lost a lot. But do we need to sign up for that when we're losing money? And then you have to start the next contract, so everything left in that contract you've paid for, but you don't get-
Well, that's what I, I, agreed. So I, I think part of it is, is on us to figure out what we, you know, do or don't need to do.
And we can, I can request this report from them, they do track the statistics.
And I remember the gasoline, you know, by the same token, we say, it was, but we had also saved a ton of money three and four years ago when the prices were sky high. And that's what, that's what happens to any of us when we sign a long-term contract. I mean, you, you just don't know. You're, you're, you're trying to predict the future, which is impossible.
But then I believe there's also that 6% in there that's added on when we consider those things.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I don't, I don't mind having a discussion on us at our next meeting, and, but again, I, I sort of agree with, let's look at what we're saving if we're-
Facts and figures, that's all, yeah.
If it's, if it's advantages, you know, to the town benefiting or not. If it's advantageous, you know, to the town benefiting or not. If the town's not benefiting, then yeah, get the heck out. But if the town's saving, we have to look at everything that we get from them and see where we're at.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
I think gasoline was, when it was a hundred dollar ninety-seven at the pump, we were paying two ninety-three a gallon.
I know, that was because it was a long-term contract, so that's...
Which made sense at the time of the signing, but again, who knows, but...
You roll the dice on a long-term contract.
Right.
Sometimes you win, sometimes you lose.
And when all is said and done, hopefully, we at least broke even, because, you know, we saved in the beginning and paid more in the end. But, yeah, Cindy, I think it's fine. But for me personally, I definitely would like to have some of the facts, figures, and benefits that we, you know, are or aren't receiving.
Yeah, and I did, no, I went through the, for the IT company, Perigis, I read through the entire 2016 report with the HCOG. And they said, well, you're saving five percent, or you're saving such and such percent. But no place in there did they tell you five percent of what? You know, so even if, let's say their bid is a thousand, somebody else's is...
Yeah, yeah, ten thousand.
Eight, you know, eight hundred, you're saving at that, you know, five percent of what?
Right.
You know, it's not a savings, it's still an increase, but...
Yeah.
So anyway, I'd like to do that one. If that sounds good to you, just do a letter. And that way, if it does come up, you know, and the town does want to get out of it, we have that option, because we don't have to wait that twelve-month waiting period.
Did they just institute that twelve-month rule recently once towns started pulling out?
I know it was in effect early this year, early 2017, when I first started looking into it.
And that's when towns started pulling out?
Well, I don't know, at town meeting eight years ago, I stood up and asked about pulling out, so, you know, it's been a long time on that.
And we just gave them a bunch of money for the courthouse?
Yes, and which, yeah, I did vote against that. And I saw where the state gave them, what, one point three million, so. And we gave ten thousand dollars, and one of those bonuses was ten thousand dollars, so, I don't know. If the state was paying for that, I don't know why they make donations, but... And I wanted to, I wanted to ask Marlene just to follow up on, do you remember, we had the discussion with the, don't worry about it. But the whole issue of having two water meters?
Yes.
In each one. Did the DPW, director Phil was supposed to send out a letter on the decision on that. Do you know if that went out?
To the resident?
Yes, that's on us, yes. There was supposed to be a follow-up with a letter from the DPW. Because he had said he would do it, and I wanted to know if that went out, because it did come up again, the billing went out.
We know the bill went out.
Right, so I was concerned about there was going to be more issues, so I wanted to know at a time before it comes up, did that letter get sent?
Well, I, well, I know the letter, I know a letter should have gone out regarding, well...
That the decision was?
We gotta take, yeah. So, well, I think the night that the resident was here, I believe that by the end of that meeting, the conversation was, you're not supposed to have a second meter. And the resident agreed to that and said, I do have a second, and he was told by the DPW director, you're not supposed to.
Right, that's correct.
I can picture them both right there.
Right.
We did say that we would invest, we would look into the feasibility of having a second meter simply for those people that, for whatever reason, want to water their gra, or do whatever, where that wa, for the usage of that water does not hit the sewer. You know, the whole idea of the second meter is people don't want to pay a sewer fee if they're not using the water for something that would hit the sewers.
But we also said that there would be a follow-up letter confirming that, and I just want to make sure that went out, so we don't...
I don't remember, I, I don't know. We have, we have not had the conversation about adding a second, the feasibility of doing a second meter. We, you know, we haven't done the research, we, collectively, you know, the DPW and us. I don't remember, to be honest, that we were gonna send a letter, because we had the conversation right in person with the...
Because Phil said he would send it.
I went back to YouTube, and I reviewed the meeting on YouTube.
Yes.
And the conversation was the directors, he asked the director, what do you want me to do? Remove the second meter? And the director says, yes, because we said you can't have a second meter. But, I mean, if the resident wants a letter, I'll check YouTube, fine. But I'd like to see a letter from that resident on, where's the agreement in writing that he didn't have to pay a hookup fee or a sewer fee? Does he have something in writing to show us that? But that's another issue.
No, I just want, because it came up, we would, I just want to make sure we follow through. So if there's another complaint regarding that, we go, okay, yeah, we did follow through and gave official, other than verbally.
Okay, well, and if we should have, we should have, and if we didn't, we'll do it.
But that's what I want to make sure.
But having said that, when you're in front of the board of selectmen and a DPW director and you have the conversation, I mean, that's, that's pretty official to me.
It is, but the question for me to bring this up came from a member of the DPW.
Yeah, that's fine.
Asking, so that's why I agreed to, I'd love to bring it up.
Well, this could be a follow-up letter saying, this is a reminder to what we talked about at the meeting, which was...
The date.
You were supposed to remove your meter.
Because they said they would send in one, so I want to make sure it gets there before we have another complaint. Okay, and my last thing that I want to just go over, I think this may come under new business. Last week, there was a small paving job done out back. An employee's car did get damaged out there. I have pictures of it. And I would like to, I don't know how to propose this, but I would like for the board to pay to have that car detailed, and if there's any damage, have it fixed. It looks like there is some damage to it and possibly to the windshield and the body paint. So I just think that because it was a town job and no one had that employee move their vehicle or send out a message that it's gonna be paving back there, I feel the town is somewhat responsible for the damage to the car.
Do you have an estimate on that?
No, no. I'm hoping, because you can, if you use Claybury, if you do different things, there's different techniques where you can get out certain small scratches without doing body work specifically. So I'm hoping if someone who does it detailing work, a professional, could do that, we'd have a better idea of what damage is left.
Who did the paving? Town?
No, it was under the auspices of the DPW, though.
But, okay, but who?
On the property.
But who did the, who did the paving? Shouldn't they be? If anyone's gonna be liable, wouldn't it be the company that created the issue?
If the DP, if the DPW chooses to leave it out to dry, but I know we were supposed, we hired them, and they are supervised by the DPW, so that's my concern. Because whenever they pave streets, they send out an email, this street's gonna be under construction today.
Yeah, no, people should be notified. I don't disagree with that.
And it would have been, it would have been a courtesy. We talk about consistently about communication. I mean, we can go back to town administrators. We had Mr. Ritter here, said his thing was to work on communication. We had Paul Boudreau here. We need better communication, and we say that every time. And we do need better communication, but nobody seems to do it. And, you know, we can sit up here and say, oh, everybody works as a team, everybody does this, but, you know...
It's those little things that are frustrating.
It's not always happening. And I just feel that, this was on town property. There was no notification it was gonna be done. And even the courtesy, walk in the town hall and say to anybody, you know, if your vehicle's parked out there, we're gonna be doing construction work, they're gonna be blowing pavement, you know? It's just a courtesy thing, it's a communication thing.
I think a heads-up could have been given.
What's that?
I think a heads-up could have been given.
And I, I just...
I'm just not sure that...
I just don't know if the...
A contractor of the town is who shouldn't be making the payments or the restitution.
So that would be for them to figure it out, but it comes under the DPW. They made the arrangements, they'd have to make that decision as to who's gonna do it. But I think we should do something. I just, if there was anybody, if it was an employee, if somebody else parked out there and it happened, they'd be going after reimbursement.
Yeah, oh, my thing isn't that it's a employee or not employee.
And if anyone wants to see the photos, welcome. It's picked up.
So is this cement? What is this stuff on the car? Or mud and tar stuff, is that what?
It's McCattam blacktop is one of them. The other one is the blower, so it's anything that was in the parking lot, from stones to gravel to everything. And it appears from looking in the picture that there is damage to the windshield. I'm not sure, windshields today are no longer that hard grass, glass. They're shatterproof, so they have that plastic coating, which damages a lot easier.
I'd just like to get a estimate if we could, that's all.
Sure.
And, yeah, you know...
That's a good idea.
I mean, agree, there should have been an email going out to the department saying, or a sign, or cones, or something. It was...
Well, even if, you know, I, you know, who knows how, if it was pre-arranged or they just showed up that day to do it. In any case, somebody should have notified people.
One way or the other.
I totally, I totally agree with that.
My understanding is, I didn't see it was, the vehicle was six feet from the area they were paving, and that's close. But thank you, I, nothing else.
Okay.
I'm all set.
Did you, so...
I'll ask for the interview on that, instead of that.
Was there any other unanticipated new business or anything we missed, Marlene, that you'd like to bring up or say?
I don't have anything more.
Okay. How's Linda holding up? How's the first one? First one's under your belt. Perfect, all right. So, nothing else?
I think we looked at important meeting dates. There was a couple emails, and I just left it. Are there suggestions and, you know, maybe you can figure it out now?
Yeah, so we can adjourn the meeting and then we can figure out the dates.
Right, that's something we can discuss, yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
John, thank you.